Okay, it's seven o'clock. It's time to call to order the regular meeting of the common council of city. Hudson, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President McCormick?
Here.
District One Morsette?
Here.
District Two Alms?
Here.
District Four Weber?
Here.
District Five Hoggit?
Here.
District Six Hall?
Here.
Before we get started, I'm reserving my right to vote as the district three representative. And the first item is a swearing in of a police lieutenant. Marty?
Sir. Thank you. We have all the police in forecourt. Any questions?
Lori.
Hi.
Hi.
You don't look any better in white. All the way over by Tom. You're gonna do it between the flags, Tom. Judge Garrity? I'm sorry.
Are you gonna make any announcement or something? I just thought you'd do. You gonna tell who's here?
Oh, I will, in a minute. Let's do it. Let's get sworn in.
Raise your hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Jeff Williams.
I, Jeff Williams.
Have been appointed as lieutenant for the City of Hudson Police Department.
Having been appointed as lieutenant for the City of Hudson Police Department.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
(inaudible).
Three. (applause). His wife has got a pen on his lieutenant badges. Jeff comes from North Hudson originally. He was five years there before he came to us in 2007. Most recently, he was our detective sergeant, worked in our detective division. He has started his lieutenant duties, obviously, the first part of the year. He's doing a great job. The guys really like him. Hopefully, this will last a long time. He won't be leaving someplace else. Last lieutenant I promoted lasted six months. But we're really looking forward to having him on the department and working here for us, so. Don't make her laugh, she's got enough time to get it.
Yeah, stick to it.
Lot more speech.
Yes. That's all you have to say about it? That's it. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks.
Congratulations.
It's now the time for comments and suggestions from any citizens present about any item that is not on the agenda.
Good evening, how are you tonight? I'm Ruth Peterson, 735 11th Street, South in Hudson. I'm here to represent the Hudson Hot Air Fair. I would like to invite you, the people of Hudson, to attend the 27th Annual Hudson Hot Air Fair, February 5th, 6th, and 7th. We have a number of pre-events. On Saturday, the 30th, at County Market, there will be balloon baskets and some hand-painted art of balloons from Charlie Margaret. And some of Charlie's balloons will be inflated at Saturday at EP Rock School during the Hot Air Fair. Captain Boo and the Carousel and a couple of the other hand-painted balloons will be there. Sunday, on the 31st, is Family Day activities at the FIP Center for the Arts from 1:00 to 3:00, for kids to make things for the parade and they can march on the parade. And that brings me to Friday night and our parade. It's a two-block parade running down Second Street, starting at 7:00, with at least 20 or more balloons lighting up the streets with their burners, with fireworks after the parade at Lakefront Park, if we don't bring the streets up first. Saturday, on the 6th, at 7:30 a.m., and again at 3:00 p.m., a balloon launch at EP Rock School. This year, we have a couple of cause balloon rides in conjunction with the American Cancer Society, St. Croix Department of Aging. These rides are for people who are dealing with or have cancer or care -- who are dealing with or have cancer, or caretakers, and people that are dealing with life tragedies, and also dementia people. Again, on Sunday, at 7:30 a.m., there is another balloon launch, weather permitting. All flights are weather-prune, wind and weather permitting. Along with the balloons, there is a marketplace craft fair and hot air fair souvenirs to purchase from 8 to 8. And other miscellaneous activities going on at the launch field also that day. We also have a 5K run that starts at 10:00, the registration at 9:00, at Mount Zion Lutheran Church. If anyone is still interested, there is plenty of room for more runners that you could either run or walk. And Saturday night, we have the Moon Glow or the Field of Fire, that all depends on the weather and the wind. Many things that are -- there are also a number of other things going on with the local businesses all weekend. We have the retail promotion button, retail button promotion, a pet costume contest at Angels, and kids fishing derby. You can also check the website and follow us on Facebook for a schedule of updated events. We, the Hot Air Fair, would like to thank the City of Hudson, their staff, the sponsors, partners, that help us make this a wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda? Okay, discussion of possible action and consent agenda items.
To approve the regular session meeting minutes of January 11th, 2016. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $683,914.73. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve a contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and successful completion of the background check. Approve the issuance of four regular operators' license for the period of January 26, 2016, to June 30, 2017, to Shelton Davis, Martin Hofstein, Peyton Butcher, and Nicholas Polarski. To approve the 2016 boat mooring fee of $5.60 per annual fee and no changes to the policy. To approve the 2016 park user fees. To approve the 2016 Grandview Park concession agreement with the Hudson Softball Association. To approve to increase the 2016 boat launch fees for city residents and non-city residents. To approve the Lessberg Memorial 5K Run-Walk Event. To consider the transfer or sale of park property on Cooley Road as requested by gaffers. The board recommended all legal costs, survey costs, et cetera, be the responsibility of the gaffers.
I think actually that's on finance committee. That would not affect that.
No? Okay. To approve Colleen Peterson and Julie Call as election inspectors, as they have expressed interest in being appointed as an election inspector. If approved by council, their term would be effective from January 12, 2016, through December 31, 2017, with the additional consideration that they may also serve as special registration deputies or special voting deputies as needed for election-related duties at the qualifying community-based residential facilities after training has been successfully completed. To approve the request for an agent change to John Cromer at Spirit Cellar LTD, doing business as Spirit Sellers, for the license year ending June 30, 2016, contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and surrender of the current liquor license. To approve the application for a second-hand jewelry dealer license for David Inlow, Richard Jewelers Incorporated, doing business as Inlow Design Jewelers, located at 523 Second Street, for the period of January 26, 2016, through December 31, 2016, contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city.
And then conditional use permit. You missed that one at the top of the page.
That's where it's the wrong explanation.
For the condition use permit for the outside sales.
Let me look here.
It's on the sheet here, Liam. It's on the top of the sheet there.
Missed that one?
Yep.
I almost missed that one.
Put the wrong explanation.
And to approve the transfer or sale of park property on Cooley --
No, no. Conditional use.
But it's the wrong description under that. Yeah. Just read the title.
Okay. To approve a condition use permit for outdoor sales area for the 1301 Gateway Circle Offerman Enterprises, Larry Offerman. It's in the -- it's in your packet, I believe. Or is it not in your packet?
No, it's in the packet.
Okay. So that would also be part of the contingent, or the consent agenda.
I'll move for approval, including item I.
I think.
On the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second. Roll call.
Morsette?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
I'll abstain. Next item is covered in finance, but discussion of possible action, a request from Tyrell and Jennifer Gaffer to acquire park property between 236 Cooley Road and 202 Cooley Road. And was everybody here during the discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Denny?
If there's any questions, gaffers are here tonight. If you'd like to ask any particular questions of them. Again, motion at the finance committee was to initiate the process for disposing of park property. A public hearing would be scheduled for second meeting in February, preceded by a Class II notice. And also with the opportunity for myself and Tom Zulia, Park and Rec Director, to sit down with the gaffers to discuss possible compensation considerations for the property. The gaffers are here tonight. If you'd like to ask any questions of them.
Sure. What are you gonna do with the property?
We bought the Rose House a few months ago.
Why don't you come up here to the mic?
I'm Mr. Tyrell Gaffer. We had bought the Rose residence right behind Dairy Queen, in between the Novas parking lot and Dairy Queen, a few months back. And it's been condemned, so we are looking at tearing it down and using it as a training facility for the fire department, and then eventually burning it, hopefully in March here. With the parking issues we've seen with the restaurant and the liquor store, and with Dairy Queen being busier, we're looking at extending the Novas parking lot into that space and using it as more parking space for both facilities.
That makes sense.
I'll move for approval and setting up the public hearing on February 26, establishing all the parameters that Denny set out, including negotiating with the gaffers.
And referral to the plan commission.
And that as well.
Is there a second?
Yes. Oh, go ahead, Trace.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I have a question.
And you're opposed?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What's the current zoning of that area? Is there any, are there any issues there?
Well, the current zoning is public, which means if the city would choose to dispose of it, they would have to go through a procedure to rezone the property. We wouldn't do that until we disposed of the property and it's no longer public, publicly owned.
I don't know if we got the vote in or not, but all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion of possible action on the application of Sapporo Inc., DBA Sapporo for Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B liquor license at 20 -- excuse me, at 1028 Pearson Drive, and request for an extension of the time we start a business until May 31, 2016. Is there somebody to speak on that?
Good evening. Attorney Ryan Carey here, representing the applicant, Sapporo Inc. Also joining me this evening is Zhong Zhi Zhang, who is sitting in the rear of the audience here. He is the sole shareholder of Sapporo Inc. I'll just talk high level about the application and then obviously open up to questions. Mr. Zhang, through other entities, currently operates three other restaurants in Minnesota. Woodbury, the Osaka in Woodbury, the Osaka in Eden Prairie, and the Osaka Restaurant in Bloomington. These are Asian restaurants. The applicant seeks to open a similar restaurant here in Hudson. 1028 Pearson Drive is a new address, it's a new location. It's the strip center near Perkins that was recently put up by Bantera. It would be the unit that is the southernmost unit, approximately 3,000 square feet in total footprint. Again, the applicant has the property under lease, contingent upon issuance of these liquor licenses. The restaurant would be similar to Osaka that you would see in these other locations. It would be doing business under a different name, that is Sapporo. It'd be a full-service, sit-down style restaurant. We're seeking, obviously, licenses to permit it to be a full-service bar as well. If you have any specific questions about the operation of the restaurant itself, of course, Mr. Zhang is here to answer those. But that generally is the high-level information regarding the application. In terms of the area, the area is set out that we seek to have the license issued with regard to certain areas, including a patio. The patio is immediately adjacent, again, south end of the building. It would be completely enclosed by a fence. And the fence material would be of the type that you currently see in the area. Other similar situated restaurants, like the ones that come to mind are Chipotle, I believe, has one, Buffalo Wild Wings has one. It'd be a metal-type fence, again, completely enclosed to protect the patrons and those around, you know, from the serving and consumption of alcohol. So, again, that's the high level of the application. The only other item I'll point out is that we are requesting an extension for the time we start the business till May 31, 2016. The applicant is confident that the build-out can be complete by that time and the restaurant open.
Kathy, do you have a comment?
Yeah, the comment just had to do with the patio, because it didn't come up in finance. And I just, in the past, the council has actually looked at a sketch. This isn't built out yet. And the reason I bring it up is that if you approve it with the patio now, sight unseen, you cannot take that away afterwards without going through a revocation proceeding. So you may want to defer the patio portion, and it's up to you until you, it's built out and you can see a sketch on how it's going to work and the type of fence.
I do have a sketch with me, if that would be something that the council would like to consider.
Sure.
The yellow area is generally the restaurant, although you see on the right side of the page, you see it's marked patio. And that would be obviously the enclosed patio for which we see the license to be issued.
Just one question, no gates or anything on the fence around the patio?
No, no gates.
So the only access would be from the --
From the restaurant.
Correct.
Okay.
There is one shown on this drawing.
Oh, there is.
Is that the entrance to the, right down there?
Is that the patio right there? Oh, yeah. It does have a doorway-type symbol on there.
Is that required for emergency exit? Do we know?
I don't know. That's just one of the reasons why you may want to defer that portion of the description, so you can see exactly the layout.
Yeah, Ryan, because I think it would hold your process up. We'd have to revoke the license, go through all that stuff.
Well, you wouldn't, you likely wouldn't have a basis for changing it.
But if we, if it's, if something's wrong, it would just slow the process.
And it simply takes a letter from you to us saying, we'd like to amend it, and then...
Yeah.
Certainly. We don't want to hold it up today. If that's going to hold it up, the entire application, we're not saying it has to include the patio today. If it would please the council, we would simply ask that when construction and build-out is complete, and we can present photographs of the patio as constructed, including the enclosure, present that for consideration, and we would request that that area be, become part of a license premises.
And there'll be a renewal process in June anyway, so potentially depending on when the build-out is.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Does Marty review the patio area?
Thanks, Joyce.
Who reviews that, see, you know, does it meet our requirements?
Probably the building inspector.
Building inspector, probably, would do that.
I'll move for approval and excluding the patio, if that's, I think that's better that way. And, yeah, I'll move for approval.
I'll second that.
Minus the patio.
Will that fulfill?
Yeah, just what would happen is the patio would be struck from the description. And then, yeah, you're welcome to submit an application to change the license description. And that's up to the council at that time.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ryan, give your...
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Next is discussion of possible action on the truck body crane bid for the wastewater department. And I think you all were aware of the earlier discussion. Kip, do you want to get the highlights again?
Good evening again. On January 21st, 10 a.m., we opened bids for the truck body crane for the F-550 for the wastewater treatment plant. We received one bid from Truck Utilities for $59,563. We did have $62,500 in our budget for that, for that purpose, so we are under what we had budgeted for that, so.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ryan, give your...
Thank you.
Next is discussion of possible action on the truck body crane bid for the wastewater department. And I think you all were aware of the earlier discussion. Kip, do you want to get the highlights again?
Good evening again. On January 21st, 10 a.m., we opened bids for the truck body crane for the F-550 for the wastewater treatment plant. We received one bid from Truck Utilities for $59,563. We did have $62,500 in our budget for that, for that purpose, so we are under what we had budgeted for that, so.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion and possible action on the written request to amend the premises description for Pier 500 by, for a one-time event on February 13, 2016. I think you all...
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Public Safety Committee, Ordinance 1-16, creation of Article 2 of Section 207 of the municipal code regarding composting. Is, there's two sections. Let's go with A first. Is there anybody here to speak on that topic?
Well, I, I'm the public safety person, so, and Catherine can interject on the composting. It's been a long time coming, but we presented you.
Oh, yeah, just as I was reviewing it today.
She throws a wrench in it.
Well, my thought on it was that it was residential composting, so that it would be allowed only in the single-family residential district in the city. It talks about residential kitchen waste and so forth. And the ordinance doesn't actually say that, it's only permitted in the single-family residential. So I did ask Chief Jensen, and apparently that wasn't actually discussed, and so, at the committee, and so we should discuss it. I don't know if that was your thought as well. And you may want to do just a first reading and bring it back, or else just add as, in that requirement section, you know, that it's only allowed in the single-family residential district.
Was that the intent?
Well, that's what you, yeah. I can't, I think it would create problems, certainly in multi-family, if everyone wanted to have some type of, I don't know, in considering setbacks, you considered, to me, it seemed like it was based on a residential lot, not other types of property. But I'm not making the decision, I just wanted to point that out.
Catherine, what needs to be changed to make it clear that it's only applying to residential?
Well, it would need to have a statement, composting bins, like, could be number eight, shall be allowed pursuant to this ordinance only in the single-family residential district.
I think Denny's got something there.
Can I comment on that? I disagree with Catherine's intent. However, you do have one-family homes, you have two-family homes. Two-family homes might be in an R2, two-family residential district. We have single-family homes and two-family homes in planned residential districts which aren't zone R1, one-family.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, you know, you can make it generic as, in regards to one and two-family homes, and then specify the specific zoning districts that those may exist in. But I don't think you want to restrict it, because I don't believe that's the intent only to single-family homes. I think two, it would apply equally to a two-family home.
Well, there's set, like setbacks in there, how does that work with...
Typically, your setbacks are the same. You know, now, perhaps your recommendation of having first reading, going back and massaging this particular section of the ordinance with a recommendation might be the best way to go.
I think so.
Okay. I mean, yes, and I agree with you, but the intent was not to limit it. So I will move for first reading.
Okay. I'll work with Denny.
Yeah, and then hopefully you can have that at our next meeting, because we've had this on the books for too long.
Definitely.
It's not a significant change.
No.
Catherine, you can talk about five minutes, we'd have an address.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is Ordinance 2-16, amendment to Section 212-9 of the municipal code regarding snow and ice removal from sidewalks. Is there anybody here to speak on this?
Well, essentially, what this does is defines that, it isn't just, the way it reads right now, it says the front, right?
It just says the front. And the reason for this is that we've run into some issues where we haven't had people cleaning their sidewalks, and when we've issued them citations for not maintaining their sidewalks, they've complained, oh, this is not my front, this is my back, and nothing's getting taken care of, and the city's responsible for cleaning the sidewalks. This came to us from our prosecuting attorney, stating that this language would help clean that up, so when we do issue citations, it'd be more enforceable in court.
You, have you issued any tickets this year?
I believe we have issued a couple.
Okay.
For the sidewalks. So, when we, when we get the complaints in, Sergeant Munich has been on them right away, taking pictures, sends out notices, tell them they got, you know, 48, 24 to 48 hours to get them cleaned up, otherwise you're going to get a citation. He comes back later if they're not cleaned up, issues a citation, and then puts out a notice to the city crew.
I think that you probably were in receipt of an email from one of my constituents regarding sidewalks, and a suggestion that something be put on the city website so people could actually report or disclose a condition?
I could sure put a link out in the front page that, if you have complaints, to notify.
But isn't, there is a complaint apparatus in the website itself, because we get them for weeds and debris in yards and stuff.
Well, I'll do two things. I'll get that out there, and then I'll also put a notice out there that, are you aware that this link is here? And, okay, I'll take care of it.
Any further discussion?
I'll move to suspend the rules. Second.
Roll call, vote?
I'll move to approve Ordinance 2-...
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Morsette?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, I didn't know. You guys are missing out tonight.
That's all right. Okay, communications and recommendations.
We need to move on the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I'll move to approve Ordinance 2-16.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that's everybody. Motion carries. Okay, communication, recommendations of the mayor. I have no idea what his thoughts are.
He will, he indicated he will be back next week, so.
Communications and items for future agendas, council members.
I've got something. Today, I attended the county library planning committee, which is chaired by Dave Osness. There was a lengthy discussion of the Hudson area library's reimbursements, or lack thereof, to its neighbors. So I would like to put that on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss that and whether there's something that we want to do about it, and if so, what we would want to do about that. The committee is suggesting a compromise proposal for us to discuss at our next meeting, so I will bring that proposal to the council.
Anybody else? City attorney.
Just a reminder that... and whether there's something that we want to do about it, and if so, what we would want to do about that. The committee is suggesting a compromise proposal for us to discuss at our next meeting, so I will bring that proposal to the council.
Anybody else? City Attorney.
Just a reminder that the primary election is on February 16. We will have absentee ballots. Absentee ballot in-person voting is available starting next Monday, here at City Hall. So Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30, you can do that at the-- And also, if you have the opportunity to register prior to the election, that'll make things a little easier than-- You can register on election day, but if you take care of it earlier, that'll speed things up for you on election days. And that can be done at City Hall as well.
Are the only items on the ballot for February 16, the mayor and then Supreme Court?
State Supreme Court, correct. Yep. And we did get the new machines are here, we got the ballots today, we did training today, so not going to win, well, second of all.
Is this what?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.